I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular city council meeting for August the 16th, 2022. We'll call a meeting to order. If you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, two and five, of the United States of America, and in to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, roll call, please.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, of which I'm aware.
Thank you. And our first item is item number five, the Mexican-American Development Association Day proclamation. If you want to come up and join me. Whereas, MATA is a nonprofit organization that was built and formed by the Tortilla Flats community in 1972 as a grassroots organization. The efforts were led by Father Walter Smidgel, a Catholic priest who was active in the civil rights movement and worked with minority groups across the country. And whereas, with over 50 years of service to the Montrose community, MATA has a heavy focus on families in need and elders. Being one of the oldest civil rights advocacy organizations in western Colorado, MATA has recently refocused on meeting the needs of the community to serve in a meaningful way and build off the many years of dedicated service to those in need. And whereas, the MATA facility is a constant location for camaraderie and support to Montrose, a gathering place to build a sense of community, a foundation for nonprofits to thrive and succeed, and is a welcome place to bring services directly to the community. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim August 20, 2022, as Mexican-American Development Association Day in the City of Montrose, and encourage citizens to join in celebrating the 50th anniversary of this important community asset. In witness whereof, I have heron to sit my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Montrose this 16th day of August 2022.
Well, thank you. It looks like Kathy just got here, so if Kathy would like to come up and say a few words, I would appreciate that.
Thank you for doing this for us. And the proclamation says exactly what MATA is doing right now. We're trying to reorganize, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to do more things than we have done in the past. So, thank you very much.
Our next item is the call for public comment on non-agenda items. The call for public comment, agenda item, is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on a matter raised at this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local laws and shall not be permitted. Is there any member of the public that would wish to address council at this time on a non-agenda item? Yes, please come on forward. If you would, you have about three minutes, and if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Kathy Cordova, 1220 North Third, Montrose, Colorado. And I am the chairman of the board for MATA. And we're going to be having a 50-year anniversary. MATA will have MATA here in the community for 50 years. So, we're having a fiesta, and I would like to invite everybody to try to come and attend. It's not going to be a big, big one like we had had in the past, because we're reorganizing and trying to get this started again. So, I'd like to invite everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, can you, that's this Saturday, right? From noon to...
It's this Saturday. It starts at noon, and it'll go through 8:00.
Okay. And is it at MATA, or is it the nearby park? Remind me where it is.
Okay, it's going to be at the MATA building.
Okay.
Because we want everybody to see what we've done there. We have done a lot of re-renovating, and so we'd like everybody to see that. And then some of it will be over at the park.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to that. And moving on to item number seven, our consent agenda. City council consideration of the consent agenda. All members of the council have read the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
We have a motion.
I second the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And now, moving on to item number eight, a new lodging and entertainment liquor license application. City council consideration of an application for a new lodging and entertainment liquor license at 1842 South Townsend Avenue for Handcrafted Light Incorporated, doing business as Blue Corn Cafe, for consumption on the licensed premises. And this will be handled by city attorney Ben Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The file is in order, and the fees have been paid by the applicant. As per CRS Section 443312, the city clerk has produced written preliminary findings and a report. I will read those into the record now. Specifically, there has not been a denial of an application at this location, either by the state or by the city, within the previous two years. It appears from the evidence submitted that the applicant will be entitled to possession of the premises where the license is proposed to be exercised. Selling liquor in the manner provided, or excuse me, proposed in the application is not in violation of the zoning laws of the city, or of any other laws or regulations pertaining to taverns made by the State Board of Health. The building where the applicant proposes to sell liquor at retail is not in violation of the 500-foot limitation from any public or parochial school, or the principal campus of any college, university, or seminary. Within the neighborhood designated by the City of Montrose as the neighborhood for liquor licensing purposes, this is specifically within the city limits of the City of Montrose, we have the following existing liquor outlets. We have two arts and entertainment outlets, one beer and wine, four brew pubs, 15 fermented malt beverage outlets, 26 hotel and restaurant outlets, three hotel and restaurant optional premises licenses, four lodging and entertainment licenses, seven retail liquor stores, and 10 taverns. There was a criminal history and background check done. The applicant, including partners, officers, and directors of their business entity with shares of 10% or greater, are all clear. This is based upon CBI and FBI background checks that were previously performed. As noted, the appropriate fees have been paid, and the appropriate posting or signage was placed on the premises. A copy of that is in the city's file. Next, I would note that the city did receive petitions as per the liquor laws. I'll go into just a brief summary of that. There were 188 petitions submitted. 74 were insufficient for various reasons, such as from people outside the city limits, insufficient address, failing to provide an age, things of that nature. But 114 were appropriate. There were no petitions submitted in opposition to this request. There were some comments, not very many, so they're few enough in number. I think I can summarize them here for you briefly. One comment was, please approve this so that an indoor music venue can enliven Montrose. Another person said something new and unique. Two said, just one word, amazing. Three said, great for the community. One said, good spot for tourists as well as locals. Another said, we need this. Three said, good idea and/or a great place. And then nine said either just simply yes or yea as a comment. That is a summary of the petitions. Copy of all of those is also in the city's file. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to briefly examine the applicant's representative.
Yes, please.
Sir, if that's you, would you please come up to the microphone at the lectern?
If you would state your name and address for the record.
Sure, John Cornblue, 1842 South Townsend.
Sir, do you understand that the city has designated the neighborhood for liquor licensing purposes as the area encompassed by the city limits of our town?
I do.
Do you object to this determination?
I do not.
Can you describe how, when, and where, or to whom, these petitions that I summarized were circulated?
They were mainly circulated at the location of our Kern Cafe to folks that walked in the door, and we held them down until they signed.
Okay. So, in all seriousness, then, did you feel that you were getting a positive response from the petitions you circulated?
Overwhelmingly so.
Okay. The city is serious about enforcing liquor laws of the state of Colorado. Can you describe your familiarity with those laws, please?
Yeah, mainly, I've done my reading on Colorado liquor law over the last week intensively, and I'm confident that we can obey all of those laws.
Have you ever previously operated a liquor licensed establishment?
I have not.
Okay. Are you familiar with our liquor law education or server training classes for licensees and servers?
I am. The next one's coming up on the 7th, and I've got a number of my kind of core staff attending.
Do you understand it's the city's intention that all licensees and their servers attend such trainings?
I do.
And are you willing to agree that your managers and servers would attend?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing me that time to go through all of that. If the applicant has any testimony he wishes to present, or any witnesses or evidence, he can present that at this point. I assume you all may have some additional questions as well after that testimony. Appropriate avenues for your inquiry would include the needs and desires of the neighborhood, as we've previously explained what that is, for new licensees, and whether the applicant possesses good moral character, such that he would be appropriate to hold a liquor license. Ultimately, your options tonight are either to approve or deny the application.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have one question for the city attorney, one appropriate.
Go ahead.
So, for purposes of the record, based on the petitions you've examined, is it your opinion that those petitions support the reasonable needs of the neighborhood and the desires of its inhabitants, which is a finding that we must have?
Yes, sir, that is my opinion.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do. I just want to hear a little bit about how you are going to make sure that you don't serve anyone under 21. What's your procedure and process going to be?
Well, we're going to learn more about that procedure and process during our training on the 7th of September. Absolutely. Having never held a liquor license prior, basically diligently follow the laws, and I think it's about staffing. I think it's about having enough staff for any given event, and so know your traffic flow and be able to control a room. That's really, in my 55 years on this planet and watching liquor be consumed, it usually goes bad when the room is out of control.
Any further questions?
I'm hopeful that at the class, you will also learn how to handle over-serving and making certain that we don't get into that kind of a situation.
Absolutely. You know, our intention right now is to not be a late-night venue, period. I think things go bad late night, and so most of what we're planning is going to be earlier and more socially oriented, and in the context of other things going on, food, candle-making, shopping, and so the alcohol isn't really the focus of the space.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
We will open a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would wish to address this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the entertainment lodging liquor license at 1842 South Townsend Avenue for Handcrafted Light Incorporated, doing business as Blue Corn Cafe, for consumption on the licensed premise.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, a brew pub liquor license transfer application. City council consideration of the transfer of a brew pub liquor license at 147 North First Street from Two Rascals Brewing Company, LLC, doing business as Two Rascals Brewing Company, to Silver Basin Brewing, LLC, doing business as Silver Basin Brewing, for consumption on a licensed premise, and to sell malt liquor beverages manufactured on the licensed premise and packaged in sealed containers for consumption off of the licensed premise. And this will be handled by Assistant City Attorney Chris Towsing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Before the city council is an application to transfer a brew pub liquor license from Two Rascals Brewing Company, LLC, to Silver Basin Brewing, LLC, located at 147 North First Street. This is an inquiry for the transfer of the brew pub license. The permit is in order, and the fees have been paid. From city staff's review of the application, one of the members of the LLC did complete a deferral program, which dismissed the ticket for providing liquor to a minor. However, this was just under 10 years ago. As such, we have seen nothing that would prevent council from transferring this license, notwithstanding this inquiry. Council can make a decision at the end of this hearing, or defer for up to 30 days. At this time, I will ask the applicants to step forward and introduce themselves to the council and announce their home address for the record.
My name is Shawna Mikulich, and my home address is 87 Witchway in Ridgeway.
And I'm Robert Ross. My address is the same as hers, 87 Witchway, Ridgeway.
Thank you.
First, could you please tell us about Silver Basin Brewing?
Yes, so I have worked for Colorado Boy in Ridgeway since approximately 2014. I was a manager for them for quite some time. I helped them open Colorado Boy Southwest in Huray. And my husband, Bob, is a, or was a paramedic. We just got him retired. 35 years as a medic, and we were looking for our next adventure. We found out through the grapevine that Two Rascals was for sale, and decided to dive in.
Well, perfect. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to examine the petitioner, so forth?
Yes, please.
Perfect. So, are you aware of the restrictions and requirements of a brew pub license?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Do you have any intention of changing the premises at all?
We are planning on putting in a kitchen upstairs, so that we are more of a brew pub, less of a tavern. So, that's sort of the way it's been run.
Perfect. As stated in the inquiry before, the City of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws of the state of Colorado. Would you please describe how familiar you are with these laws?
Very intimately. Yeah, I've run, I actually started my journey with working in bars and restaurants approximately 11 years ago. And yeah, I've done multiple trainings, especially after accidentally serving a minor alcohol approximately 10 years ago. And if anything, it makes me way more concerned than the average bear, so.
Are you familiar with the available liquor law education and server training classes for licensees and their employees?
Yes.
Do you understand it's the city's intention that all licensees of the City of Montrose and their servers attend these trainings?
Yes.
Would you be willing to commit to the council that if the license is transferred, that you, as licensee, managers, and all servers attend such training within 30 days of the transfer if they're not already certified?
Yes, most definitely.
Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, do you have any further questions?
Are there any further questions for the applicants? Seeing none, we would entertain public comment. Is there any member of the public that would wish to address this? Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the transfer of a brew pub liquor license at 147 North First Street from Two Rascals Brewing Company, LLC, doing business as Two Rascals Brewing Company, to Silver Basin Brewing, LLC, doing business as Silver Basin Brewing as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, Ordinance 2593 on second reading. City council consideration ordinance 2593 on second reading, and ordinance of the City of Montrose, delegating authority to the Board of Directors of the Montrose Emergency Telephone Service Authority to set the rate of the charge imposed on service users pursuant to CRS 29-11-102, 102.5, and 103. And before we get going, there is a statement by Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For purposes of the record, I'm going to recuse myself from items number 10 and 11, because I represent both entities in my capacity as an attorney, so it would be inappropriate for me to participate.
We'll give council a read and time to leave the room. And this item will be presented by city attorney Ben Morris.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This matter was approved on first reading. There have been no changes to the ordinance since that time.
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we would accept public comment. Are there any members of the public that would wish to address this item? And seeing none, we would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2593 on second reading as presented.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
All present voted yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, Amendment of the Community Development Block Grant Contract for Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. City council consideration of a request to amend the agreement between the City of Montrose and the Department of Local Affairs concerning a community development block grant award for Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club's construction of a new facility to reflect the revised project. And this will be handled by Community Engagement Specialist Ross Valdez.
Good evening, city council. Thanks for having me. Today, we're going to ask you to please consider an amendment to the contract between the City of Montrose and DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, for the community development block grant that is being led by the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. Community development block grant will also be referred to as CDBG. The city applied for and was awarded this community development block grant for the construction of a new Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club facility in Montrose. Due to the rising cost of construction, building a new facility has become financially unfeasible for Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. In order to fulfill the objective of the grant, Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club would like to purchase the property at 1869 East Main Street, also known as San Juan Cinema, and renovate it for its intended use. Just to reiterate, DOLA does allocate these funds to the City of Montrose, and the contract is between DOLA and the City of Montrose, and then we have a separate contract with, or a separate agreement with, Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. If there are any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those. We also do have Bud here, and he can kind of dive into some of those details, again, around the future facility.
Thank you. And one of the clarifications of this is that we have spoken to our local DOLA representative, and he has expressed a certainty that it will proceed without any hitch. It's just somewhat of a formality?
Yes, exactly. And so, we spoke with our regional manager from DOLA about amending this agreement and the pivot to this new project. And this request to amend the contract from city council is necessary to be able to proceed. And from our conversation, it seems that this is right in line with where they'd like to see the project go.
Thank you. And for the public that are watching, that there is drawings and a kind of a layout of what the new program and project will look like in the work packet. If you'd like to access that, it's available online. Mr. Taylor, is there anything you would wish to say to us? If you would give your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Bud Taylor, and I reside at 1509 Avon Drive in Montrose. This is just a great, great use of funds that we have available while doing a big, quick pivot that we're doing. What this allows is for us essentially to have a facility that is a quarter of the cost, but twice the square footage. And so, from just a financial standpoint, it makes a lot of sense, and it will also allow us to serve even more families than what we could have dreamed of serving. And with us owning our, essentially owning the building outright from the very beginning, we can scholarship and get more kids in the door that need us most, so, yeah.
Very good. Are there any questions from council for the applicant?
No.
One of the things that we've discussed is that this is a benefit to Montrose in a number of ways, but not the least of which is that the availability of young child education programs, as well as the repurposing of an existing building that is kind of underutilized at the moment. So, I've got to say, this is pretty exciting for us as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will accept public comment. Is there anyone else would like to address this issue? And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to request an amended agreement with DOLA for the Community Development Block Grant Program Award to Project 20-508, Montrose Boys and Girls Club Facility Construction.
Multiple seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
All present voted yes.
Thank you. And if someone would let councilor Reed back in the room? Make sure he didn't go out for coffee. Make sure he didn't go out for coffee.
Put coffee, I was worried.
Or if he went out for coffee, better bring back everybody. All right, moving on to agenda item number twelve, the Hub at Montrose Crossing amended development agreement, city council consideration of an amended development agreement with Eighteen-Ninety Homestead, LLC, to facilitate development of the hub at Montrose Crossings, first phase, to include one-hundred-and-sixty market-rate rental apartment units within the city of Montrose. And this will be handled by city manager Bill Bell, who is on our Zoom call.
Reed, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for letting me chime in via Zoom. Under the weather a bit today. As you mentioned in the packets, you have three different documents. You have a redlined agreement, updated agreement, and then a staff memo from when we recommended approval back in October for the the hub project to incentivize the project to help with workforce housing here in the community. So the original deadline for building permit was June first of two thousand and twenty-two for Eighteen-Ninety Homestead, LLC, or Matt Miles. Matt had asked us back during that time if we could do a short extension, and I granted that administratively for one month to July first, two thousand and twenty-two. As we approached that deadline, it was clear that we would need to extend it again. And I didn't feel comfortable as city manager doing an extension more than what I think all of us would agree was just a minor administrative extension. So that's why we're here before the city council today after talking with Mr. Miles. And I, and he approached the city council, talking about the economic conditions that are out there right now, the rising interest rates, and the ability to get financing for a project of this size under the current conditions. The request right now before city council is to do an extension of our development agreement to change the building permit deadline to August first of two thousand and twenty-three, with construction to be completed by August first of two thousand and twenty-five. So that's still a two-year construction timeline, as was proposed prior by Mr. Miles. It just takes our building permit out to August first of two thousand and twenty-three. The reason staff is behind this and recommending this approval is what Mr. Miles talked about with the economy, we all know, is is out there with the rising interest rates and and the ability to get financing for something of this size might not make it pencil at the moment. And so doing a bit of a delay to hopefully gain some favorable conditions here in the next several months seems to make sense from a business perspective. But the other thing we looked at was when the council and the city decided to incentivize this developers' agreement, we needed workforce housing, and it was really important to the city and our community. And so we asked ourselves at our meeting with department heads, do we think we still need workforce housing out in our community, or have the conditions changed in the community to where we don't need to incentivize this type of development? And we all agreed that the need still exists, and but for some type of an incentive or subsidy of some sort, these projects still don't pencil. And so we are recommending approval by the city council tonight. Any questions?
So for clarification, Mr. Bell, that there are no significant changes to this agreement other than the extension of the date, correct?
Correct.
Are there any other questions?
I just have one question, Bill. If I understand the amendment correctly, suppose that the building per permit, not suggesting it will be, but suppose suppose it were to be pulled within the next sixty days, say, that would still be a two-year window from pulling the building permit to a certificate of occupancy. Is that correct? It wouldn't extend it out beyond that?
I believe we just, what we've done in the past, and I think we are thinking this one along those same lines, is we have the completion date for construction of August first, two thousand and twenty-five. So if he were to pull the building permit early, he could take longer than two years to construct, as long as he doesn't go past the August first, two thousand and twenty-five mark. But I think it would be to the developer's advantage to build as quickly as possible once they start the project because they want cash flow to start coming in to pay that. So I don't know why a developer would pull a permit and then delay construction.
Sure. But are you saying that there's not a timeline that starts when a permit is pulled in a normal, in our normal process?
We, if you're asking about in the normal, in a subdivision construction type process?
Yeah.
Or just in our developer agreements?
Um, just, like, just a building permit in general. If one pulls a building permit, does that?
I'm going to defer to Ann on that one. I don't work with building permits as often as she does.
Sure. So there are timelines where you have to keep moving forward with their inspection process in order to keep a building permit active. And I'm sorry that I don't know off the top of my head what that timeline is between when a when a permit lays inactive, but I think it's six months to a year where if your permit has not moved forward, then it becomes inactive and our building department can cancel it. But it's rare that that happens. Usually, like Bill said, people, once they pull, they move forward, and once they start work, they move forward. It happens here and there when someone will pull a building permit and then decide not to move forward at all with a project, but they usually don't actually start in that circumstance. Sorry, I don't know the exact timelines.
That that helps me understand the process, though. Thank you.
In my experience as a
But that's only on start of construction, correct?
Yes. In my experience as a general contractor, that you have one year to show some progress on the project. If you do any project, there is no hard time deadline for completion as long as you show progress on that project.
Yeah.
Mr. Yuleberry, your expertise?
Some people take a long time, but they can't.
Not the same.
Yeah. Some people take a long time, but they have to be moving forward with some progress.
We don't normally put a deadline on the construction completion. Just we have to show progress on the project.
Okay. And I'm not suggesting we not do this. I just want to make sure I totally understand. In the original agreement that we had with Mr. Miles, a building permit was supposed to have been pulled by a certain date, which we are now passed. And as I recall, the agreement did have a CO date built into it?
It did. It was, Bill, I have it in front of me just in case you don't, but I'm reading June first, two thousand and twenty-four was the completion date. And now it's changed to August first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So shouldn't our extension be just part and parcel of the original approval? If we were two years in the original approval, shouldn't we be extending it for another two years as opposed to opening an additional window for CO?
It seems to me that we already are doing that by putting in the completion date of two thousand and twenty-five. It's just the only, the only change in this that I see is that should he get the financing early, he would have the ability to start early. But I don't want to put the limitation on him because if he doesn't have that ability to get the financing.
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't. I wouldn't do that. My only question was, are we adhering to a two-year timeline between building permit and CO? Or do we, are we agreeing? And it's fine if we are. I just want to make sure we all understand what we're doing here, that potentially we are extending it beyond.
Well, it's the same as it was before. So if you look at the red line, June first, two thousand and twenty-two has changed to August first, two thousand and twenty-three, and June first, two thousand and twenty-four has changed to August first, two thousand and twenty-five. So they've both been moved the same amount. Is that what you, or am I not understanding?
Yeah. Now, I don't want to belabor the point. My only point being that if if it were to be pulled earlier, it would be more than the two years.
Yes.
And as long as we're okay with that, I just want to.
I personally have no objections to that. If he has the opportunity to start earlier, that would be great. It's more beneficial for the citizens of Montrose to have apartments and workforce housing online early.
Right.
As is his benefit as well.
I agree.
Yep. Any further questions?
Yeah, where are the concessions coming from? Like, for example, sales tax, is that, does that come out of the general budget? Or? How's that going to work? And the utility, is that ARPA money? I believe that's where it's coming from. Could you explain what we're giving concessions and where those concessions are coming from?
Sure. So the, on one of the documents that was in the packet, the original staff memo from two thousand and twenty-one outlines, it has a matrix, and it outlines the original proposal, and then the revised construction cost estimates that came in, it shows how those actually went down. And so as of right now, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars would be in the form of waivers, fee waivers, and then sewer and water infrastructure costs and fees associated with connection fees, tap fees, one point three seven 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 four one. So total, one million seven hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars would be the total incentive for the project, three hundred and ninety-nine eight-eight-one waivers, and one point three seven million approximately in the water and sewer. And before, when we first did this, we didn't have the ARPA funds really available to us at that point. And so in this year's budget, we have money budgeted to help with this project. And so that money will carry over to to next year, in case it starts happening next year. And then it'll most likely go into that two thousand and twenty-four. So it'd be divided in a couple of different budgets. But we would use ARPA funds to cover the water and sewer infrastructure piece, at least a sizable amount of that to reduce the burden on the water and sewer fund. But originally, it was going to come in the form of fee waivers, and then our water and sewer infrastructure would come from the water and sewer funds. Did that answer your question?
Uh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Bell? All right, we would accept public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this? Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I move to enter into an amended development agreement with Eighteen-Ninety Homestead, LLC, to facilitate development of the Hub at Montrose Crossings, first phase, to include one-hundred-and-sixty market-rate rental apartment units within the city of Montrose as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we roll call vote, please?
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuleberry?
No.
We have one no and four yes votes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Bynum unfortunately has to leave. And we will move on to item number thirteen, the Waterfall Canyon Subdivision Filing Number Six Final Plat, city council consideration of the Waterfall Canyon Subdivision Filing Number Six Final Plat to create forty-four residential lots and associated rights of way and easements. This is Planner Two, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of city council, good evening to any members of the public that are watching tonight. As you probably know, Waterfall Canyon Subdivision is located in the western part of Montrose. This is the final plat application for the Waterfall Canyon Subdivision Filing Number Six Final Plat, located south of Spring Creek Road. The property as a whole is one hundred and eighteen point eight-three acres in size, mostly consisting of an outlot for future development. This final plat creates forty-four new single-family residential lots within the R-three-A medium-high-density district. The Waterfall Canyon Subdivision amended preliminary plat number three was approved in June of two thousand and twenty-two. All lots on this final plat meet the minimum lot size as required in the R-three-A zoning district. Surrounding streets must be in place, inspected, and approved by the city engineer final, prior to final approval. Improvements will receive a preliminary letter of infrastructure completion. City sewer and other utilities must be installed and available to serve all lots prior to final approval. And so this is the first page of the plat itself. This consists of plat notes and signatures. And then page two shows the forty-four residential lots being created by this plat. There is also one open space tract, which is one point one-six acres in size, and the plat dedicates rights of way to the city. This is also more visible in tonight's packet. I know it can be pretty small on these screens. And then finally, page three, which is zoomed-out view, shows the one hundred and seven point two-four acre outlot, which is for future development. In conclusion, city staff recommends approval of the Waterfall Canyon Subdivision Filing Number Six Final Plat, with the standard condition on final plats as included in tonight's packet. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Reese? We would accept public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Waterfall Canyon Subdivision Filing Number Six Final Plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuleberry?
Yes.
All present voted yes.
Thank you. And now moving on to staff reports. Our sales use and excise tax report by Finance Director, Shani Whitaker.
Okay, sorry about that. William, he's the smart one in the group. Sorry, Greg. I must apologize first for the first page of your packet of the sales and use tax report. The total budget numbers were incorrect. So it was a formula issue on the spreadsheet. We fixed it. It's been fixed on the website. Lisa has it for the packet, and I handed you all out one that is correct. So it's just the budget number. It's not the actual numbers. So let me share my screen. All right. So this is the sales and use tax, sales use and excise tax collection report for June of two thousand and twenty-two. So halfway through the year, so it's, we're progressing nicely. The general fund sales and use tax is collected at three percent. In June, compared to June of two thousand and twenty-one, retail sales tax is up twelve point six percent. Construction use tax down forty-one point six percent. Use and auto use tax up thirteen point five percent, with total collections up ten point three percent, and a positive budget variance of twenty-eight point five percent. Year-to-date, compared to year-to-date through, in two thousand and twenty-one, retail sales taxes up eleven point three percent, or approximately one point one million dollars. Construction use tax up forty-six point six percent, or two hundred and four thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax up two point five percent, or nineteen thousand dollars, with total collections up twelve point one percent, or one point three million dollars. A budget variance positive of thirty-one percent, or just about three million dollars. Public safety, sales and use tax. On January first, we started collecting point five-eight percent for our public safety fund. June compared to June of two thousand and twenty-one, retail sales tax is up twelve point six percent. Construction use tax down eleven point six percent. Use and auto use tax up thirteen point five percent, with total collections up eleven point six percent, and a positive budget variance there of twenty-eight point seven percent. Year-to-date, compared to through June of two thousand and twenty-one, retail sales tax for the public safety fund is up eleven point two percent, or two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Construction use tax up almost thirty percent, or thirty-two thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax up two point five percent, or four thousand dollars, with total collections up eleven point six percent, or two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Positive budget variance there of twenty-seven point two percent, or five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Positive budget variance there of 27.2%, or $517,000. And all of those 11.6s in this report, I double-checked them all, triple-checked them. It's amazing. The Montrose Recreation District. In June of 2014, we began collecting 0.3% to finance the new recreation center on Woodgate Road. In June, we collected $246,982, or 11.6% more than we did in June of 2021. Year-to-date, we've collected $1,251,691, or 11.6% more than we did through June of 2021, or $130,000 more than 2021. Excise taxes. Hotel excise tax adds 0.9%. Restaurant excise tax adds 0.8% to our total tax rate. June, compared to June of 2021, hotel excise tax is up 9.3%. Restaurant excise tax up 3.7%, with total collections up 5.3%, and a positive budget variance of 20%. Year-to-date, compared to year-to-date through, in 2021, hotel excise tax up 20.2%, or $12,000. Restaurant excise tax up 8.3%, or $22,000. Total collections up 10.4%, or $34,000. Positive budget variance of almost 27%, or approximately $75,000 more has been collected. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that was given up back in 1990. And in June, we collected $58,361, or 11.5% more than we did in June of 2021. And year-to-date, we've collected $289,987, or almost 11% more than we did year-to-date 2021, which equates to about $28,000. So with that, that's kind of the rosy sales and use tax report for June.
Very good, thank you. And second quarter budget review?
So the second quarter budget review is, as I said, we're midway through the year, so every major fund, well, all the funds, revenues have been collected more than we budgeted, and expenditures are less than 50% in most cases. So we're looking very well. A lot of that is capital projects, and sometimes those are slow, and sometimes those are fast, so it just depends on kind of that schedule. But everything looks to be in order for 2022, and we are, started the budget process for 2023, so.
And we're deep in the process for budget on 2023.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sean, I have a question.
Sure.
On some of these reports you put unaudited, how often and when do they audit those numbers?
We, yeah, we have a third-party auditor audit our books every year, so annually. Once that audit is done, then those change to audited numbers. But we reserve the right to make a change, reclassify something until it's audited.
So when is that done?
Usually, it's done by the end of July, but with some of the, as you know, the, trying to get people and keep them employed, our auditor's having a little bit of trouble with that, so we have an extension to September 30th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Shani? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other staff reports or staff comments? Seeing none, are there any city council comments?
I'd just like to comment on, I thought Saturday's Funk Fest went very well. Had a little short interruption with some wind and a little bit of sprinkles, but all in all, it looked like everyone was having a great time, and thanks to the staff.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
I wanted to reiterate that MADA's 50th Anniversary Fiesta is this coming Saturday, and the public is welcome to that. It's a great opportunity to come down and see some fun things, and eat some good food, and hear some good music, and socialize with some really good people. Are there any other comments or questions for?
I'll be passing out popcorn.
I'll be taking tickets.
It's good popcorn, too.
I have good popcorn, all popcorn's good popcorn.
With a beer.
Yeah.
With a beer, too.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, and we are adjourned. I'm looking forward, I was telling them that.